At this time, we'll have a technology presentation by Mrs. Gregory and Mr. Watson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lori Gregory, Director of Educational Services, and this is Brandon Watson, Director of Technology. We also have some special guests with us tonight, the second grade teachers, Sandra West-Richel, Beth Levikoff, Sarah O'Brien, and also 11th grade English teacher Amber Clausen. In addition to some students who you'll introduce later, I think. Right? Okay. So we are just going to give you a little bit of an update on things that have been happening in terms of technology and the technology plan goals. So every section of this presentation refers to one of our goals, and the first one is integrating technology to support student achievement and engagement. Obviously, you know, that's a very important goal for us. We are always talking about this model and working to move from substitution, which was just like in the beginning when we got our devices, or, you know, people were just using them to type, probably way back when I was in school, you know? And now we're really entering the realm of redefinition, which is the highest level of technology integration in education. And part of that is because of all the things available now, artificial intelligence, which you'll hear about tonight, personalized learning, things like that that are really changing the way we can instruct students. Every year, the Technology Committee, we meet every other month, and we're always working on initiatives to help us meet our tech plan goals. But we also pick an ISTI standard every year to work on, just to kind of give us a focus area. And this year, you know, we chose the Empowered Learner, which was standard 1.1. And you'll hear more about this tonight, because a lot of this is students being able to take ownership of their own learning, use, you know, personalized and adaptive software to get extra help, using artificial intelligence, things like that. Oh, we put our second grade going first. Oh, Anderson. Okay. Now, I'd like to introduce Amber Clausen, who's going to talk about some really interesting stuff she's been doing in her classroom with artificial intelligence.
Good evening. My name is Amber Clausen. I teach English 11, English 11 Honors, Senior Mythology, Essentials in Writing, and Hilbert College 101. And Lori came to see me earlier in the year and asked if I might be interested in looking a little bit further into artificial intelligence. And I said yes. So she and I sat together for a good, probably 80 minutes total, and she introduced me to this website called School AI. And I started to play around with it and look at it, and I loved it, and I kind of ran with it. So the image that you are seeing here up on the screen is a snapshot of some of the spaces that I've created with School AI. And so they're all prompts where I would go in, so you can see up in the corner, it says transcendentalism. So my 11 honors students do a unit on transcendentalism, and so I programmed it to be Ralph Waldo Emerson, and they could then in turn ask it questions in the classroom. And I also did it for Frederick Douglass, so you'll see those two there. I've also created some writing editors, which are pretty neat. So the transcendentalism image on the bottom, what I created was where it says delve into the influential transcendentalist movement, explains what it is. And then the preview that you see next to it is what you can see as an educator before this is launched to students in your classroom. So when the kids go into it and open it, that would be the prompt. It would say, welcome, we're diving into transcendentalism today. What do you know about it? And then the students would then ask a question. And the really neat thing about what you can do with this is that every time it responds to the students, it then asks them an additional question. So it prompts them to continue this conversation and to dig a little bit deeper. The other amazing thing with this is that it's completely integrated with my Google Classroom. So I can get a hyperlink for it, send it right out to my students, and they can use it directly on Google Classroom, which enables me to watch their screens through GoGuardian, which is another program that we have here that I use all the time. And it also will allow me to see from the teacher end of it on my computer screen what each of the students in my classroom is asking the chatbot, so that I can monitor what they're asking and the types of questions that they're presenting to it to make sure that they are appropriate. So here you'll see a little bit closer. This one on my left here, this was one I created for myself, because I teach English 11, and so the state assessment is so valuable, and they do a ton of writing in there. So the prompt was you are a writing editor, and you'll offer feedback to students on their drafts. Do not write the essays for them. Use the following guidelines. So I'm able to take the criteria and standards from New York State, plug them right in here, include and attach the argument rubric, and then the students in my room can then take their essays and put them in here, and the bot will offer them some feedback based on the criteria. And of course, I do have to be diligent and say, do not write the essays for them. Please just give them feedback. On the right, you'll see a sample of what it looked like in my 11th grade classroom, using Colin Watson's as an example. So this is an image of what would appear on my screen as a teacher. And again, it's while they're in the classroom working on it, and I can kind of be at my desk or moving around, or I can display it on the board behind me. So History Explorer, hello there, I'm Frederick Douglass, I was born into slavery. And then, as you can see, the CW, there was Colin's question, what was it like not being fed enough by Thomas Ald? And then it would respond to Colin. So I would have the students work in groups to develop questions that they'd want to ask Frederick Douglass, and then they would put them there. And again, the beauty of it with this particular program and this website is that it continuously asks the kids follow-up questions. And so it continues that conversation. And again, it's important to just put in there, do not summarize the chapters of the book. And I did have the students play with it, because I wanted to see what's going to happen if they ask it a specific question, like summarize chapter 10 for me. And so I said, play with it, see what it would do. And the response that was given said, well, that's an interesting question. You should read the chapter first and then come back to me when you're done. So it really is pretty neat to do. The beauty of it, though, is it launches directly through Google Classroom, and you can control all of it. And you can also turn on and turn it off. So I have it set when I want to do this type of a lesson within the confines and the deadlines and the time period of my classroom. These are another artificial intelligence project that my senior mythology students just completed. You'll see two here. So using AI, deep AI was the AI image generator that's hyperlink to the top. We finished a unit on the heroes. And so I gave the students the Instagram post, and I gave them the template. One of my students is here, too. I gave them the template, and they were asked to create an Instagram post as if they were the persona of one of those Greek mythological heroes, and they were encouraged to generate images using the AI image creator. And the beauty of that one is that it is like talk to text, which is really neat, and it also will generate the image based on the description that your students give them. So they really need to know their material, and then they can get in there and do those kinds of things. And then the image on the left was the most recent. We finished reading the Iliad, and the students were tasked with creating a wanted poster, again, asked to use an AI-generated image. So as you can see, this student chose to use Achilles, and so she had to go in and give it as many details about Achilles as she possibly could, and that was the image that it would generate for them. And they liked it. I asked them, I did a survey, because I was curious. So I said, what aspects of the writing editor did you find most helpful? So these are some of the responses from my Hilbert College class. Explains where flaws in your paper are, and it can help you with more specific things if you request it to do so. I liked the ability to receive differing amounts of advice. If you only want a little piece of advice, you only get a little. So this also helps to teach them digital citizenship, because we talk about AI-generated writing versus AI-assisted writing. And so if they're asking the AI-specific questions and getting the feedback they want, they're also utilizing that good digital citizenship to not ask it to write the paper for them. At the top, I asked my honors crew, what are some of the aspects of the AI conversation with Frederick Douglass did you enjoy? And this one said, I enjoyed how there were new opportunities for insights on history that's been taught practically the same way for our entire lives. It was a very creative way to learn and experience the topics that are usually lectured. And then it continued, this one I loved, I thought it was very descriptive and was challenging, because it made me think more about the types of questions I should ask him. And then I said, would you want to do this again? And it was an overwhelming response. I just copied a couple of them, yes. But again, when you teach teenagers, when you get a response that says, yes, slay, I think you're doing something right, like they want to continue to do it again. So I plan to use it further in other units that I'll teach this year with the honors crew, the regular crew, Hilbert, and like I said, my essentials class, because it does teach them some different ways to get some feedback on their writing. Do you have any questions about it or anything?
I was just wondering, how accurate do you find the responses? Because I've seen some people use it in like the medical field, and some of the AI stuff is pretty hilariously inaccurate. So I was wondering, in this setting, how it is.
I was impressed with the accuracy that it gave in its responses from Frederick Douglass and from Ralph Waldo Emerson. It does say, as a disclaimer to the educator, that it does not know everything, and that that's the really, the importance, again, of good digital citizenship and being a monitor. So it's my role, not only to encourage them to ask those types of questions and those critical thinking styles of questions, but also to monitor what the AI is responding with. One of my seniors, and I told him I was going to say this, and he's like, oh, he asked it to marry, will you marry me? And I said, what are you doing? And he goes, I was curious. I go, how did it respond? And it just said, very funny, but I don't think your teacher would like this type of a question. So it was really kind of neat to see that. But I did find with the two experiences I used it under with Douglas and Emerson, it was good. Very, yeah.
So this is more of a question to the tech department. Are we putting any tools in place for like AI checker to see, like, how much? There's stuff out there that can say basically how much it's been AI-written. And I wonder if we've staffed our staff with those tools to be able to go look and say, hey, how much AI is in this versus, versus, you know, the original work?
A lot of that has been discussed at Regional Curriculum Council and Tech Consortium, places like that. And the recommendation has been to not purchase things like that. And I actually have done some testing of some of those products. Granted, not all of them, there might be better ones now. But there's usually like maybe a 70, 75% accuracy rate. Like, I actually copied and pasted whole texts that I generated through AI, and it said it thought it was a human. So the couple that I tried. So I am just not certain that they're accurate enough to be, you know, worth investing in yet. Of course, that could change, and it could be something to consider. So I really think this is going to be something where teachers have to really know their students, really monitor the use of it. I think with School AI, you mentioned a lot of features where you can kind of lock things down in certain ways. You can monitor their screens while they're working, make sure that, you know, you can set up these spaces so that they can only get feedback, and they can't, certain questions aren't permissible. Just I think there's going to be, you know, new skills for teachers to learn on how to monitor and safeguard. I don't think necessarily the detectors are going to always work, but like I said, that could change.
I have them write the draft in the classroom first. So it has tailored the way that I structure my course and in the timeframes that I give them. So I know that it's in front of me, and it's their original writing before they're allowed to use the editor. And I have them go through the peer editing process face-to-face with another human being in the classroom with a checklist first, and then this is like the last step. So they're not writing essays with this one that I use. It's more just about getting some feedback. But in terms of what you're, I've caught several students using AI complete, like, written work. So it's tailored my instruction to say, okay, we're going to write in the classroom. So I'm going to devote three or four days to this particular essay assignment, so I know that it's your original work before we go to something else. That's what I do.
Nice. Thanks.
Okay, we have one little additional thing when we're talking about six through 12 technology integration. We just launched Varsity Tutors, which is an online tutoring program that's available to students 24/7. Basically, they chat. They don't have video or anything like that. They just chat through typing with a vetted and trained professional tutor. They can upload documents, use a whiteboard, and we did collect parent permission before creating any accounts. So right now, we have 14 students using it, which is pretty good for just starting. You know, we did the parent permission just because they do a lot of background checks. Background checks, they say they background check everybody like every single day and all this. But, you know, just to be safe, we made sure that parents were aware of what their child would be doing. And there's a short little video that just kind of gives you an overview of what it's like. Thanks.
Maybe it's a tech guy to screw up the sound.
Real time. Students sign into Varsity Tutors from their school portal, then simply select chat with the tutor or the get started button. Next, they'll select their preferred language, choose a subject, and submit their question. Clicking start session will automatically match them to a tutor standing by. We understand the importance of visuals when asking questions, so we give your students options. They can draw on the shared whiteboard, upload a file, or share an image of their assignment. Because there is no limit to the tutoring session, your students can take as much time as they need with the tutor. All content can save, so students can reference sessions in the future. Once they finish and select leave session, they have the option to leave feedback, helping us to continually improve the learning experience. Give your students 24/7 live study support with on-demand tutoring from Varsity Tutors for schools.
So that program is available 24/7. So, you know, if someone is up at midnight and forgot to do their homework and gets stumped, they can log in and use it. Obviously, we wouldn't recommend that, but we're waiting to see how this is. And I'm planning on following up with all the families of the students who are using it right now to see what they think, because I really have no idea if they're going to have a good experience or not. But it is free to schools, and it seems like a helpful thing. So we're just going to see how it goes. I mean, yeah, you would have to, I mean, we just provide the, yeah, we provide the student, you certainly, they could sit with the student while they do it. You know, we provide the student with a login, and they get in through their clever account from the school. But the parents, you know, when I email the student on how to get in and all the instructions and everything, I always copy the parents, too. And so they can definitely be a part of it.
All right. All right. So just a couple of quick things before we end up doing the demonstration part of it. And instead of talking about technology, we're actually going to show you it working. This year, we were able to finish replacing the iPads in the GLP. This was a three-year process. And with the hardware replacement plan that was established, we were able to get them all swapped out, so they're all new. Thankfully, come to find out, end of August, iReady stopped supporting the version of iPads that we had in kindergarten and never let us know. So within a week turnaround, we were able to get the iPads in, get them installed, get them turned up for the kids so they could use them. So if we weren't in a replacement cycle, we would have been really caught shorthanded with that. We're a full year in now to using a thing called clever, which students are going to show you. It's a QR code that logs the kids into their many apps that they're using every day in the iPads. It used to take a considerate amount of time to get them logged in, remember logged in. You're talking about kindergarten through second graders. So you're going to see that demo. It's pretty cool. I think the kids like it. I know the teachers certainly do. And one of the programs also they're going to show you is this extra math. I'm not going to speak on the instructional about it. That's why I brought the professionals here. We used to have a free version of it that we had in the iPads. It was limited. There were not as many features. By assessing and evaluating our software usage, we were able to take some licensing from some non-used software and move in and purchase a building-wide license for the GLP, and the second grade teachers are ecstatic about it. So with that, I'm going to introduce Sandy West-Richel and Ada Mathis, Beth Levikoff and Maisie Lavelle, and Sarah O'Brien and Ella Demler. Oh, you all have to stand up. No, no.
I guess we're all standing.
Do you want to go first?
I am going to.
Okay. Let me see your iPad. And you're actually going to see in one second here what the child actually sees on their iPad right up on the screen.
You're going to start with.
Come on, come over here.
You're going to start with iReady.
There you go.
I'm Sarah O'Brien, one of the second grade teachers at GLP. This is one of my students, Ella Demler, and she is going to demonstrate some of our math programs that we use for the technology that you have all provided for us. The first thing that we are using is iReady. Go ahead and jump on iReady and go on to one of your MyPath. iReady is our math curriculum. It has both a hard copy and a digital component. On the digital component, go ahead and hit a lesson. Each student has a customized lesson plan, a path that they take. The program learns by how the students are answering questions, how quickly they're answering questions, how accurately they're answering questions, and it moves them through different lessons, different levels quickly, or, you know, with more support, more practice as needed. So it's really great in how customized it is. This is something that we do for about 10, 15 minutes every day. It does not make up the bulk of our math instruction. It supplements it. And it shores up for each individual student any areas of weakness that they need a little bit of extra practice at. So Ella has already completed her lesson for today. I'm, what do you want to do? Do you want to go on to the next one? Can you just show everybody what happens when you do one? Go ahead.
And now, the jumping beans perform their most fantastic tricks yet, using you. Oh, yeah. Oops. Check them out. Help this bean-tastic bean subtract by adding up on a number line. Start at 28 and add up to 75. Help the bean get to the next 10. Move the slider. Plunge the bean. Now jump to the 10 that comes just before 75. Plunge the bean. Now help the bean jump to the total. Plunge the bean. Add the jumps to find the answer. The jumps add up to 47. 28 plus 47 equals 75. So 75 minus 28 equals 47. Let's find 54. Help this bean-tastic bean subtract.
Okay. So each lesson has an instructional component, a practice component, and then a quiz component. Each of our classrooms, I think, might have different ways of tracking how the students are doing, how many lessons they're doing. In my classroom, we have, I should have brought it, but I didn't. I'm sorry. We have little punch cards where every time you finish a lesson, you punch a card. If you get 100 on a lesson, you get to fill in a chart, a block that makes up a larger picture on the back of our door. And when it's all filled out, we get a class prize. It's usually, what? What have we done? We've done a movie. We've done Kaboom Room. We've done Pajama Day. We did extra recess. So we have different prizes that we do. So there are incentives and there are tracking. So students will do this for about 10, 15 minutes, however long it takes to do a lesson, and then they move on to extra math. So can you go over to extra math? Go ahead. And Ella has already completed her extra math for today. So I don't think it's going to let, will it let you do it? No? Try. Oh, yeah.
Now it's time to practice with a brain training session. Take a look at the problems we're going to focus on. Which ones do you know how to answer right away? Which ones are trickier for you? Remember, your math brain grows when you try new and challenging things. So those trickier problems might not feel so tricky after a while. Try to answer each question before time runs out. Press the button when you're ready to start.
So, well, I don't know how to stop it. I mean, she's doing great. Let her go. So our extra math is math fluency, and this is what it looks like. They do it for about seven to 10 minutes a day. But they're doing it consistently. They're doing it every day. When we had the free version without the licensing, about maybe half of my kids could get on it on any given day. Now that we have the licensed version, it is a huge game changer. Kids are on it all the time. And this also speaks to what Lori was talking about earlier about kids being responsible for their own learning. This is one of the ways that our students are responsible for their own learning. It is up to them to focus on this. The way the extra math works, it learns like iReady does in that if a student is not focused, if they're not on task, if they're not answering questions, if their mind is wandering, or they're looking out the window, or talking to a friend, or extra math thinks that they don't know the answer. And so they are going to make them practice over and over and over again. But if they're on it, and they're doing it, and they might only give them two or three a day, as opposed to seven or eight a day. So I talk to my students about this a lot, that, you know, if you are focused, you don't have to do as many of them. You know, you are responsible for your own learning. And this is a way that we encourage that, teach that, instill that sort of responsibility for their own learning in them. So this is extra math. There are a few different, thank you, Annie, there are a few different incentives and rewards. This is Mrs. West-Richel's chart that she has going on in her classroom where when they get trophies, so it'll give them trophies. When they get trophies, she does stickers. She also has badges. Ella is an addition queen because she has mastered addition. She is right on the cusp of mastering subtraction. And then it will move her on to multiplication, even though multiplication is not one of our standards in second grade. It'll still keep moving them on. So there's a lot of enrichment there, too. And then, after we get done with extra math, once you get done, you get to go to your favorite. Go back to iReady, and you can do. When we first, so last year, iReady didn't have a fluency function. iReady didn't have a fluency function. They came up with it this year, but it wasn't supported on iPads right away. This just came about maybe in December, where they were, where we were allowed to do it on our. This just came about maybe in December where they were, where we were allowed to do it on our iPad. So go ahead. Their dragon island. Oh, cool. Nice job.
You did really good.
All right.
All right.
What is your, what's your favorite um, math thing to do on our iPads? Fluency play. Yeah, Ella loves to play with the dragons. She always comes up to tell me how many dragons she got this week.
All right, here.
Okay, okay. Here, just, just swipe out. It's not, yeah, you're gonna be fine. It's gonna reset tomorrow. You're gonna be great. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You did awesome. Thank you. Let me steal the cable. You can have the clock. Thank you.
We're gonna need this. Um, hi, I'm Sandy Westrussell. I teach second grade. And this is Ada Mathis and she's in my class and we're, we're going to show you Brain Pop. And clever is how you sign into Brain Pop Junior and it's the, not the free version anymore. It's the paid for version, which we love and it's so easy to sign in using clever. So Ada's gonna show you how to do it.
This is what it looks like. It's just a QR code with the kids logging in for me.
And then she'll scroll down and here's what I love about um, Brain Pop Junior. I can assign things out to either the whole class. We could do it on the smart board. They could do it on their own on. So she's gonna go up into where there's that number and those are assignments. Um, I can assign to just certain students. It can be a review of something. It can be an enrichment of something. In second grade, you have so many levels of kids. You have kids that are ex, you know, um, beyond what we're teaching. And there, we have kids right where we're teaching it and then you have kids who need some enrichment and it depends on what you're even learning. Brain Pop Junior has math, reading, writing, social studies, science. I have so many things I can assign out. So she's going to pick um, our lunar. I signed out a lunar new year. To her and what I signed, what I assigned her was the movie, which they watch first. She'll show it, but then I'm gonna have her get out of it because it's, but it's a fun movie and the kids like it and they can pause it. And they can watch other parts of it and they can go back to it and they can do it at their pace. Again, we could do a whole class on the smart board. I could have just a couple of students do it as a reading activity or not a reading activity, but a social studies activity for this. Um, there's also a easy quiz and a hard quiz. There's different activities and I only gave her a few. The draw it and um, the write about it. Which I'm not gonna have her do because I have never actually assigned that. I just wanted you to see it. Um. And I think that's pretty much it. So she's gonna show you what to do. You're not gonna read that yet. You're gonna show the thing. Then you can read it. Yep, so you can show them the movie and then we'll pause it. They don't need to see the whole movie, but the kids usually like the movies. Um, we're probably gonna get rid of that part. The other thing I wanted to say is the quizzes, I get the feedback from that immediately. So I can see who needs more help and who um, needs to sit with me or have a reteachers teach it a different way. Okay, so then, how do you get back? You know what you're doing more than I do. Yeah. So now she can do the easy quiz and she's gonna show you how that, how that works. And there's always a speaker button. So if you have a lower reader who um, is not Ada. High reader, but you can still listen to it first and then read it yourself, whatever they would like to do. And she's gonna take the quiz and see how she does.
No pressure.
Yeah.
No pressure.
I already gave her the quiz yesterday, so she knows all the answers. And then it tells them if they're right or wrong right there, so they can, they can fix it. But my score is their original, their original answer. Okay, so there's usually five questions and then they, they also get their score at the end. It also helps them be independent and keep track of their progress and know how they're doing. We just did a whole clock unit. And I had students do the Brain Pop Junior beforehand and I knew who was really gonna be ahead and I can enrich them. And then I had, I'm having them do it at the end as well. See, she knows all the answers. There's only five. And then she can, uh, she must say, it's okay. And then she can send it to me. It doesn't count. Um, and then one of the other parts is the draw and they can draw a picture about it. This also helps with. If, if I'm doing stations and some students are doing the Brain Pop Junior. If they're done super fast, they can do as much detail as they want in this and there's extra things that they could do as well. While other students are finishing up. And that's pretty much it. There is the, it's okay. Um, she wanted to read to you about her favorite part of the, here, you want me to take this part?
Here, I'll take it.
Her favorite part of using our iPads. And again, this is just one activity on there.
Hi, my name is Ada Mathis. My favorite activity on the iPad is class dojo when I have pad pass. I like it because there's an activity where you can build stuff. I also like to do fluency flow on iReady. Because there's fun math games. I'm going to show you how you.
Oh, yeah, we should have read that first. I got nervous. Okay.
Hi, I'm Beth Levikoff and I have Maisie Lavelle here with me today. We're gonna be talking about Seesaw and showing you a little bit about Seesaw. Um, it is an interactive app that you can assign your students activities uh, across the curriculum. So math, social studies, science, uh, ELA. Um. Um, Maisie, you can go ahead and log in. These activities are, some of them are created by Seesaw. Some are by other teachers that utilize Seesaw. Or we can uh, create the, the activities ourselves. Um, the students have the ability to type on the document. They have the ability to record their voices. They have the ability to make, um, take pictures. Um, and then at the bottom, they have the ability to write, highlight, use a marker on the app to answer the questions. Um, it's amazing, all the different types of activities that can come through here. They can watch videos. Um, they can, you can upload a worksheet to here. Um, and not that anybody wants to hear this, but this really was a lifesaver to the second, to I think all of the GLP during COVID. Um, this is how we were able to do the home learning, um, was through Seesaw. So Maisie is um, on an activity here. She is, it's a time activity, so she's going to show you how she's going to match the time up with the clock. We use these activities to um, support our instruction, remediate or, and even enrich students. So Maisie's finishing her activity. We, we picked a, a short one. Um, she will then click the green little checkmark up in the corner. This sends her work to, to my um, account. I can then, you can go ahead and click it, honey. I then can, I can write on it. I can highlight things. I can type her a message. I can give her a sticker for doing a great job. And it sends that feedback to her account. Um, if I, if it needs to be redone, we can send it back to be redone as well. So um, this is Seesaw.
So thank you.
Yeah. Maisie, Maisie also wanted to share her favorite app. What's your favorite app on our iPads?
My favorite app is Storyline Online because famous people read us.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question to the teachers and the students? How's the bandwidth? Is there enough bandwidth to handle? Everything that's going on in the school and you see things lagging. I, I mean, I'm just general curiosity with. You know, I know we all have issues at home and stuff like that. So I'm just curious how the bandwidth is, is working here.
The last couple of years has been good.
Okay.
I mean, I was around when it was not good.
I, I remember some of those days.
Yes, it's good. So I think what should be happening is, Ava, are you logged in? Oh, you're getting there. Okay.
I missed this one, I think. Wasn't this used for during COVID a lot?
It can be. You can, you can do it.
I, I just remember when my daughters were seniors and juniors, I'd sit with them as they were doing, I think Pig was a big one.
You, so they can scan in, um. By scanning it or they can put in the PIN and then it shows who's in. Uh-oh. What happened, Ada? Are you still in Ada? Okay. Oh, you're doing your little, she's changing her guy. That's my mouse that crossed it off. Who are we waiting for? Maisie, she's gone. I'm sorry, Maisie, stressing out. Okay. It's a short one. What do we not use on the iPad for math? And they all got it right. Bookshelf, the others are math. Play along if you'd like. So that gives you a little scoreboard. Sometimes I buzz by that fast because I don't want it to be too much of competition. Kahoot is a fun way to review for a test. Pick your favorite iPad activity for reading. So this is a Kahoot that we created. You also can find a whole bunch that they're already done for you, which is lovely. Every single answer was right, by the way, on that one and Ada's on fire. And what do you think the Board of Education does? Look at all your choices and pick one you think is right. Awesome. You guys are smarty pants. And then it gives them medals. And it, and I always tell the kids, it doesn't really matter. I just want them to practice and, yeah.
Thank you.
And that's that.
Thank you.
You're awesome.
Thank you. I'll bring coffee.
Thank you to all our guests. We really appreciate you coming and I know we've taken a lot of time, so I will be really fast in finishing up. Um. Take care, everybody. Um. One of our goals.
There's a purse.
Oh, no, that's mine.
Oh, forget it.
Um, so one of our goals focuses on school community connections and equitable, equitable access. And we were talking a lot in the beginning and during COVID about, you know, who has access to internet, who has access to devices at home, things like that. We're fortunate to be able to provide one-to-one devices. So, you know, all of our students have a device. But when it comes to internet, we, you know, the state wants to know every year who has internet, who doesn't. So I just thought I'd show you, um, we're still working on collecting data from all of our, our students' families. But we have about half of them in and um, you can see that most, most people. Um, ninety-eight percent can access internet in their place of residence. Um, most have residential broadband with a few other options in the minority. We have provided a few mobile hotspots to families. And the primary barrier to internet access, most said none. But um, you know, second was cost and, and then third was availability. But again, there were not many people. So I think that is good news for us. Hopefully, we never have to shut down and go home again. But if we do, we are definitely ready. Um. Data security is of the utmost importance. It's becoming more and more important every day. You probably hear about all the things that are happening. Um, it can be scary, but I want you to know that we are staying on top of it. Um, I go to training all the time, stay on top of all of the um, recent issues and make sure that we are not affected by them. Um, Brandon is a great help auditing user access to programs. And documenting the data flow in our district, so I can make sure that people don't have access to things that they shouldn't have access to. Um, we provide training to our staff annually and I, I have to say, I think our staff are getting very good. Almost too good at this because, you know, we launched our, our new HR program and a lot of people were emailing me saying, this seems like a scam. And it was like, everybody's almost a little paranoid here, which is okay, because I'll, I'll just say, no, no, it's okay. You can, you can open that. But um, I'd rather have them be like that than, you know, the alternative. So I think, I think we're doing as well as we can and we will continue to hone our skills and learn more about that. Um, what's next for us in the tech department? You know, in two thou, two thousand twenty-six, we have to have a new district comprehensive technology plan. And you know, Jeff was at one of our tech, recent tech committee meetings and he was talking about how we really need to make. A vision for what we want tech integration to look like, STEM education to look like, or STEAM, all of that. So we're going to be working on that in the next year or so. And these are our tech committee members. And that is all. Do you guys have any last questions? All right. Next, we have budget presentation. Mrs. May.
See, uh, while Mrs. May's getting set up, I just want to remind the board that often when someone joins our district, we have their presentation follow the students. So it just puts a little bit more pressure on them to be entertaining.
I was just gonna say, it's a tough act to follow. So, all right. So this is the first budget workshop for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development. Um, so as of right now, everything is very preliminary. We're kind of estimating at a high level. So um, as we get deeper into the budget development process, you'll see things start to get a little bit more, more refined. Um, so for tonight, we are gonna start with our budget parameters, are looking at inflation and CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index. Um, and then we're gonna go on to our budget builder. So what makes up our budget, uh, which includes our estimated revenue. And our rollover expenditures and then looking at where our budget gap is currently. Okay, so if we start with, um, CPI or Consumer Price Index, um, Consumer Price Index is the factor that is used to look at inflation, so. When we think about a basket of goods, uh, that a consumer uses, so think about groceries or, um, gas, how much those prices have increased from last year to this year. So CPI is important for school districts and in budgets, um, not only for what we're estimating, like classroom supplies to increase or equipment that we're looking to purchase. But also it is a crucial component of the tax cap calculation, so. The, um. Whichever is lower, um, two percent or CPI is used in the tax cap calculation. So currently, the average Consumer Price Index is approximately three percent. Um, so since it is over the two percent, we are assuming that the, um, lesser of the two, so the two percent would be used in the tax cap calculation. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, just a little side note, um. In twenty twenty-three, we were seeing that CPI was about four percent, um, and then in twenty twenty-two, it was about eight percent, so we are seeing that inflation factor CPI coming down. Which is, which is good news, um. And then lastly, when we look at, um, the tax cap, um, calculation, which we won't have all of the information needed to calculate that until closer to the end of January, so we will be looking at that at the next budget workshop. Um, but the tax cap for twenty-four, twenty-five was four point three percent. But the actual tax levy increase was two percent, which I'm assuming the board, uh, used. It it only went out at two percent because that's what they felt was tolerable by the community members, and it was, um. What we felt we could still operate our budget with. So if we start with the estimated state revenue, um, so this is using the November state aid runs, which again is very preliminary. We are expecting these numbers to change, um. But if we look at foundation aid, we had a very small increase of about forty-six thousand estimated for next school year, which is only about a point five-two percent increase. Um, small decreases in our instruction materials aid and some of the special education costs with. Uh, private excess cost and public excess cost aids. When we look at transportation aid, it had a increase of about a hundred thousand, where BOSI's aid had about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar decrease. Um, both of these categories are. A little bit different than the other expenditure or the other state aid revenues, um, is they are expenditure-driven aids, so what that means is that. Um, the aid estimates for twenty-five, twenty-six are based on what we're estimating to have spent in the current school year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So our expenditures are estimated to go up in twenty-four, twenty-five, which would then result in a higher aid in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and then building aid, so you see a pretty significant increase there. A little bit of a caveat, um, that money is already kind of spoken for, so. That increase is related to deferred building aid related to old capital projects that we will, we will be receiving in next school year. Once we get to the expenditure side, which is in another couple of slides, you'll see that our debt service payments next year are also increasing by the same amount of one point two million. So that money is already spoken for, cannot be allocated to normal operations. We are expecting to receive the executive, um. State aid runs, which is the governor's proposal for state aid for next school year within the next couple of weeks, so this number, these numbers should be a little more refined next time we present. All right, so if we look at the overall revenue, so not just state aid like we did in the last slide. Um, right now, we are holding everything consistent, as we get further in the budget process, these numbers will change. We should be seeing increases and decreases across all of the different revenue lines other than state aid. So for example, if you look at the miscellaneous revenue, a portion that makes up that is interest earnings. So over the last couple of years, we've noticed we've had significant interest earnings or high interest rates. We are seeing those interest rates starting to come down, so we are, we'll be estimating, um, interest revenue to probably decrease in the next fiscal year, um, so just a little caveat there. All of the revenue is unchanged at this point, um, just a little side note, you will see that state aid overall. Is only increasing by one point one six million. That includes that large increase in our building aid, so overall, we are estimating a decrease in our state aid for next school year. If you take that building aid out. Okay, so if we look at the expenditure side of the budget now, so just a high-level review of, um, our rollover wages, which is our contractual rollover. Is about a one point one nine million dollar increase. On the offset of that, our benefits increase is about six hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Our debt service increase, which we've talked about before with the increased building aid, um, our debt service payments are estimating to increase also. One point two million. So the one thing I will note with that, so. When you look at debt service payments and you look at building aid, what's it? You get a net effect of what's called the net local share, um, so essentially what we're paying for. Debt service is increasing, but then our building aid is also increasing, so the net effect to our local taxpayers or our net local share is remaining unchanged at about six hundred thousand. And then lastly, part of our rollover budget includes. Estimated other contractual increases, so for example, our property insurance, our district memberships. And other contractual items, which are based on historical trends, so what our actual expenditures were for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as well as the twenty-four, twenty-five school year up until this date. So if we look at the actual numbers, again, salaries increasing about one point one nine million and then benefits by that six hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And then similarly, the contractual items, about a hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, oops. And then debt service increasing by one point, a little, like one point two million, again, offset by the building aid increase by one point two million. And then transfers, we're seeing a small increase, about thirty thousand, so this would be for our school lunch program as well as our summer school special education program. Okay, so then if we kind of put both pieces together and look at, are you, okay, our revenue is increasing or decreasing, um. Our expenditures are increasing, and then if we look at the property, um, tax levy. Using the current school year as a baseline, so that sixteen million is what the tax levy was for the current school year. Starting at a zero percent increase, what the budget gap would be at about two million. And then going all the way up to what the twenty-four, twenty-five tax cap was at four point three percent. Um, and looking at what the budget gap would be at each iteration. Um, so last school year, we went up to two percent, uh, which still leaves a one point seven million dollar, uh, budget gap, and then even if we went up to the tax cap, assuming that the tax cap would be unchanged, which it will change. Um, it's still a one point three million dollar budget gap, so definitely some work to be done, um, as we move through the budget process. And then lastly, just some next steps, so. I already talked about the property tax cap calculation, which is due to New York State by March first, so the next budget workshop, we should have, um, a fine tax, refined tax cap calculation. So what we wish, we should know, the amount that we can go out to our taxpayers up to the cap. Um, and then reviewing the governor's budget proposal or what the state aid could look like for next school year. And then a more in-depth review of expenditure and revenue categories. So, any questions?
So a couple of things, Mrs. May, you know, we, we, um, we have a budget gap right now, which is not unusual in January, because we're, we're playing, I shouldn't say playing, but we're working with. To the best of our ability, projections. And when you have a budget gap, there, there's two things that you can do, you can earn more, you could spend less. And the only way we earn more is if our state aid goes up or if we raise taxes, and we, we know what the, we know what the feeling is about, about taxes, we all pay them and none of us are happy about them, right? So we have to be, and we know we will be limited i- in some extent there. I think there's, there's hope. That our state aid will be flat. As opposed to being reduced as it was originally last year. The governor has somewhat reversed course on her original plan to, uh, remove save, save harmless. Uh, which we are in that category, and that's why our, our original numbers were a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars last year. Um, and is now on record is talking about the importance of funding education, so there's some hope. Um, I believe her first, um, budget, uh, runs are, are sometime next week, maybe Thursday of next week. Historically. Those are the worst numbers we see. Uh, usually, but I'm going, I'm going back with the previous, previous governor as well. Those are usually numbers that we're not really happy about. And then, you know, the pencils get sharpened and people go to work and 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 they tend to get better from there. This is a different, this is a different circumstance. Um, so I'm, I'm not sitting here with a lot of confidence that next week's numbers. Are going to improve much from there. So we need to be prepared as a district, as a board, as a business official, as a superintendent, to really work hard on that spend less component. To that end, Mrs. May and I have started, uh, meeting with, with each principal and each, each, uh, each department to. You know, listen to their, their wants and needs, really their needs for, for the ni- next budget season. While trying to make sure we continue to support, what I will say again, is a pretty darn robust. Educational program for a district our size. And we'll continue in that vein. This is gonna be hard work, right, the first, our first few years together, the budget was okay, wasn't that, wasn't that hard, wasn't a lot of hard decisions to make. Last year got a little tougher, this year's gonna get a little, little tougher as well, with absolute respect to our taxpayers. You know, they, our taxpayers have, have made a statement. They're concerned about their taxes, we know that based on our, our recent capital project vote, and we owe them, uh, we owe them our best work. Thank you for your, for your presentation, did a very good job. Thanks.
Oh, great, will it help that the, uh, you know, that? The money that we're going to, the, the money that we're allegedly going to get from the insurance companies now that they changed their tune, will that be helpful?
So you're, you're asking a capital project question, and I am, I am gonna talk about that in my superintendent report. Uh, do I think that will help? Yes, will that help with our, with our budget next year? No.
At this point during the meeting, members of the Board of Education may request to have any items removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Are there any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? No? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is now the approximate time and position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status, for example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Anybody? Ellen, anything, anything? No, okay.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Lori Couple be appointed on probation as a bus attendant effective January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And ending September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon CSCA contract level four, step twelve. Note, Mrs. Couple is a teacher aide in the district.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jennifer. Kelso, Celso, I apologize, be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon CSCA contract, level four, step one.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jay Appolito be appointed on probation as a bus mechanic effective January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and ending July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon CSCA contract. Level eleven, step four. Note, Mr. Appolito's start date is approximated, but it will not be later than January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. His probationary period will end six months after his actual start date.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the data privacy agreements. Negotiated by the new student data privacy consortium, SDPC, be approved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the transportation route spreadsheet effective January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five be approved.
Any discussion? I got one, I just want to put a big thanks out to the Transportation Department yesterday. Um, south of here, it was dicey. And, uh, glad we did a little bit of early dismissal to get the, uh, the little ones home a little sooner, so. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education approved the Keystone Purchasing Network as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Next, we have the business report.
I have nothing else to add tonight, so.
We have questions.
Then next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, uh, first off, thank you to, uh, Mrs. Gregory and Mr. Watson, as well as our teachers and our students for their outstanding presentation this evening. Uh, very informative, really enjoyed, uh, learning how. The investment we make in technology has such a positive impact on the educational environment. Um, real, one of the things that resonated me, eh, in the, in terms of the education side of it. Is how technology really assists those teachers in differentiating instruction for their students, and that's just fantastic, and and I think I, I. I would love for all of our teachers to, to see at least bits of that presentation, including Am- Amherst as well, um, because I think those tools. Could really free, free teachers up to do some really high-quality work, so we need to keep, uh, keep moving forward in that, in that area for sure. Thank you to Mrs. May for your work on the budget thus far, and as I said, this has been the easy part, so we'll, we'll get, we'll get to work and earnest on that, on that very soon. Um, Mr. Silver, you asked a question about the Eden Elementary Roof and and whether, um, the insurance coverage will, will be assistive to the district, and and I think it will. But I'm just not sure how yet. Um, our insurance carrier has reversed course, and they're now willing to, um, to. Uh, cover the cost of replacing the roof. But I don't know exactly what that means yet either, because we're in the process of, of getting estimates and. Uh, gathering information on, on what damage was done by the water that that came through, in, in addition to the, the ceiling and the auditorium. What that means for that component of the project, uh, cap, capital project is, it, it remains to be seen. We need to get some legal advice, some, uh, advice from our architects and and from our, uh, construction management, uh, team as well. I do anticipate that there'll be a positive impact, I just can't really articulate what that'll mean at this point, okay? So more to come, and by the way, you know, if things go as I expect them to. The roof replacement, which was scheduled to happen in twenty twenty-eight. Will likely start this summer. Okay, so that is good news. I also want to commend the Transportation Department, uh, for, for their efforts, our drivers and the leadership in that department are outstanding. Uh, through, uh, collaboration with them, it was, it was decided to dismiss a little bit early, and, uh, and I know that. That was, it was shared with me today that that really brought the drivers a sense of relief, so they didn't feel the pressure to, to be back and and pick up our youngest students in a timely fashion, so. They are a fantastic transportation department in, in every way, shape or form, and I'm, I'm very, uh, I'm very proud of them, and I know that we're lucky to have them, all of them. Um, now, finally, and, um. Amanda, you have to get every word that I say going forward down. Tonight is, is kind of a, a special evening because this is Barb Tomasulo's last Board of Education meeting. And, you know, she's served the district for twenty-four years. Um, I've, uh, I've worked with a lot of folks. And I can't look at you right now. And I can't look at you right now. You are not only an outstanding assistant, an outstanding district clerk, but you're even a better person. I've been so lucky that you've been by my side in transitioning to this district, going through some really difficult times when I first got here in terms of the pandemic, some budget issues and so on and so forth. You are absolutely a guiding light. Your institutional knowledge is incredible. And so I'm glad I know where you live because because you're not getting away. I don't know if you saw Pat Hawkins in the back. She tried to get away. She hasn't been able to get away. I keep trying to reel Ellen back in too. But but truly, Barb, you've been a confidant and a friend for a while now. The laughter that that we share in the office makes the work a lot lighter. I am proud to have worked with you. I'm proud to call you my friend. I am so glad that your family was able to join us this evening. Look over your right shoulder. Yeah, Gary, sit down. Okay, so, you know, and and I know I'll have more words for you in a more private private fashion, but I just want you to you and the district to know how respected you are, how appreciated you are, and how much you're going to be missed. You're welcome. Thank you. And and I don't know if you know this, but in front of Mr. Servoni, there's cake. There'll be there'll be a little reception at the conclusion of this meeting. Why is it that I was crying more than you were?
Um, next, we, I guess not, no student report today. All right. Next, we have Board Report Roundtable.
All right, I got one business thing. We've got our second regionalization meeting scheduled with Yuri Bosi's February 3rd. So I know myself and Mrs. Gregory are attending and Mr. Sortisio. So more to find out, more to report back in February, whatever is coming of this whole regionalization discussion. So last, Barb, thank you. You've made my job. And as being president for the last, I don't know, four or five years, so easy. And I thank you for that. It it really helps to, you know, when you need my help, come down, it's all ready to go out the door, enjoy our 15 minute chats after that. So enjoy the enjoy the back nine.
No, I just want to second what everyone said. Thank you for always keeping us, I guess, up to date and on task. And for me personally, the reminders when I'm running late on things that I need to turn in to you. No, you will be missed. You will be missed. I mean, I don't think I could have gotten through the last 10 years without calling you with questions and and everything. So but enjoy, enjoy every second.
And as many know, I'm not technically sound. And she even volunteers for me to bring my computer in so she can work on it. So I will definitely miss you a lot.
I actually first met Barb, my family moved in two houses down from her and her family. And, oh, God, that was a long time ago, way, way long. 31 years ago. Thank you. And who would have thought, you know, moving forward that I would get to know her in this capacity. But you've been great, but definitely enjoy the back nine, definitely. Actually, enjoy the 19th hole. The next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, February 12th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the middle school, high school library. The regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, March 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, location to be determined.
That's a wrap.
There's no.
No, we're having cake.
That's right. Cake, no executive session. Yes. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned at 7:15 PM.
All in favor?
Thank you.